Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting, August 21st, 2024. To begin, I have a very special introduction and welcome to Raju Man, who is our brand-new member of this commission, appointed by Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine. Raju is an urban planner who has worked on issues related to housing, infrastructure, and open space for the last 20 years. As the Battery Park City Authority's President and CEO, he oversees important projects for the betterment of New York City, including a $500 million investment in affordable housing from its Joint Purpose Fund and the Battery Coastal Resilience Project, which will protect lower Manhattan from future storms and sea-level rise. Many of you know Raju, or might know him from his role as the Director of Land Use and Deputy Chief of Staff for the New York City Council, where he led a team of planners and lawyers working with elected officials, community members, and city agencies like the Department of City Planning on neighborhood planning projects across New York City. He also serves on the boards of MoMA, PS1, and the New York Housing Conference. I will note on a personal level, I have known Raju since before his time working for the City Council, when he was a member of Community Board Five, and then worked with him very closely and leaned on his expertise significantly when I was a member of the City Council. He is smart, deeply committed to the city, and his breadth of knowledge, sharp wit, and decades of experience will be a great addition to this body. So please join me in giving him a warm welcome today. We will begin today's agenda, so Raju, we're looking forward to working with you. We're going to begin today's agenda with several votes on new housing opportunities, landmarking proposals, and more items found throughout the city before getting to our three public hearings today. We're going to kick things off with a vote on an acquisition by the Department of Parks and Recreation for the Garden of Youth Community Garden at 748 East 182nd Street in Belmont in the Bronx. This would preserve the site's use as a community garden and help it receive capital for needed improvements, such as a new fence, new water source, and more. One of many such gardens in the community, this garden is close to the Bronx Zoo and several bus lines. The next vote has to do with the Willoughby-Hart Historic District. These two blocks of distinctive late-19th-century rowhouses lining Willoughby Avenue and Hart Street between Nostrand and Marcy Avenue, Marcy Avenue's in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, were built during a time of intensive residential development that followed the extension of streetcar lines to the area and the construction of the Brooklyn Bridge. Staying in Brooklyn, the commission will next vote on a proposed mapping of three new streets to facilitate the Alafia mixed-use development at 875 Erskine Street in East New York, Brooklyn. Formerly the site of the Brooklyn Developmental Center, this large project would create around 2,500 income-restricted homes and include commercial, community facility, and light manufacturing space, all within walking distance of Shirley Chisom Park, Gateway Center Mall, and multiple bus lines. Heading to Central Harlem, we'll vote on a transit-oriented development project by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. Malcolm Shabbaz Harlem Plaza is a proposed 100% income-restricted affordable residential and community facility building with nearly 110 homes. In addition to serving as a cultural hub and a new home for the Malcolm Shabbaz Harlem Market, this building is close to the Two and Three Trains at 116th Street. Our next vote is regarding 343 West 47th Street in the Special Clinton District in Manhattan, a proposal to demolish a part of a four-story residential building with four dwelling units to facilitate its preservation and enlargement into a seven-story building with seven dwelling units. The building is in a transit-rich area close to the One, Two ACE NR and W trains at 49th and 50th Street. Also in Manhattan, we'll vote on a proposed rezoning to create 60 homes, around 15 of them permanently income-restricted at 701 West 135th Street in West Harlem. This unique building is near Riverbank State Park and the One train at 137th Street City College, and its top-two floors would cantilever over the Amtrak rails that run next to the Henry Hudson Parkway. Our next vote is for a Landmarks Preservation Commission designation of a site only a couple of blocks from this hearing room, the One Wall Street Banking Room, commonly known as "The Red Room." This visually-striking reception room and banking hall was completed in 1931 for the Irving Trust and Bank Company. It truly stands apart from any other bank interior of its era. In Astoria, we will vote on two new mixed-use developments with ground-floor retail along 21st Street. The first building would contain over 50 homes, 16 of them permanently income-restricted, and the second would include nearly 40 homes, a dozen of them permanently income-restricted. Both buildings would be about a block from Astoria Park and half-mile from the Astoria Boulevard subway station. Our last vote for today is an authorization to facilitate a detached two-family residence at 107 Bloomingdale Road in Pleasant Plains, Staten Island. For today's public hearings, we're going to start with a proposal by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services and Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to acquire new office space for the latter's Poison Control Center relocation to 215 Lexington Avenue in Kips Bay in Manhattan. Moving to Midtown, we'll hear from the public on the proposed conversion of 10 Rockefeller Plaza. This special permit would turn parts of this building, including some of the ground-floor cellar, sub-seller, and floors seven through 16, from commercial to hotel uses. The resulting hotel would contain 136 rooms that would be steps away from Rockefeller Center and nearby attractions like 30 Rock and Radio City Music Hall. The last hearing for today is on a multi-building development in Borough Park known as Brooklyn Yards. This proposal would platform over an active Long Island Railroad freight line to construct 14 buildings that would contain a total of 270 homes, around 70 of them income-restricted, as well as some office and retail space. The project would also feature three publicly-accessible open-space areas with playgrounds and be adjacent to the 62nd Street Station, which includes the D and N trains. So, that's it. With that, Madam Secretary, I'm going to turn it to you to get today's meeting started.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, August 21st, 2024. I will now call the role Chair Garadnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin. President. Commissioner Surlou.
Here.
Commissioner Crowe. Commissioner Doak.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, August 7th, 2024.
Great. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, August 7th, seconded by Commissioner Ramperchat. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eight minutes are approved.
Scheduling supplemental calendar numbers one through three. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, for a public hearing to be held in-person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway and remotely through the NYC Engage portal.
Great. I make a motion to approve the resolutions. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Marine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, resolution's adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Report section on page four. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number one, Garden of Youth Community Garden, CD 6. B 240320 PQX. And the matter of an application for an acquisition concerning Garden of Youth Community Garden. For a favorable report on calendar number one, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number one. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number two, Willoughby-Hart Historic District, CD 3. N 250006 HKK. And the matter of a communication from the Landmarks Preservation Commission regarding a historic district designation concerning Willoughby-Hart Historic District for the adoption of calendar number two for referral to the City Council, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A report has been adopted to forward to the City Council on calendar number two. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number three, Alafia Street Mapping, CD 5. C 240082 MMK. And the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Alafia Street mapping. For a favorable report on calendar number three, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number three. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number four. Malcolm Shabbaz Harlem Plaza, CD 10. C 240301 HAM. And the matter of an application for a UDAT designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned property concerning Malcolm Shabbaz Harlem Plaza. For a favorable report on calendar number four, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
This is a good solution for a site that many, many people look to in Harlem. I vote yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number four. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number five, 343 West 47th Street Demolition Special Permit. CD 4. C 240244 ZSM. And the matter of an application for a special permit concerning 343 West 47th Street Demolition Special Permit. For a favorable report on calendar number five, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number five. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine, 135th Street rezoning. CD 9, calendar number six, C 230206 ZMM. Calendar number seven, N 230207 ZRM. Calendar number eight, C 230208 ZSM. Calendar number nine, C 230209 ZSM. And the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning tax amendments and special permits concerning 135th Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 10, One Wall Street Banking Room. CD 1, N 250005 HIM. And the matter of a communication from the Landmarks Preservation Commission regarding a landmark designation concerning One Wall Street Banking Room. For the adoption of calendar number 10 for referral to the City Council, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A report has been adopted to forward to the City Council on calendar number 10. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 11 and 12, 21st Street rezoning. CD 1, calendar number 11. C 230250 ZMQ. Calendar number 12, N 230251 ZRQ. And the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning 21st Street rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 11 and 12, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak. Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Two.
Two, yes. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 11 and 12. Borough of Staten Island, our last voting item, calendar number 13, 107 Bloomingdale Road. CD 3, N 240076 ZAR. And the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 107 Bloomingdale Road for the adoption of calendar number 13, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surlou.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Upstain.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Calendar number 13 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the Public Hearing Section on page nine.
Great. Well, we asked those who are testifying today, either in-person or on Zoom, to limit their remarks to three minutes. And, Madam Secretary, let's go ahead and call the first item.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 14, 215 Lexington Avenue DOHMH Office Space. CD 6. N 250008 PXM. And the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning 215 Lexington Avenue DOHMH Office Space.
Great. And for this item, we have an applicant team which consists of Cornelius, Armin Trout, Ksenia Inayatov, Maria Mercurio Zapala, Kyle Daniels, and John Kosa, representing various agencies of the city of New York. And they are joining us by Zoom, so whenever you all are ready, you can go ahead and get started.
Hello, good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Good morning. We can.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ksenia Inayatov, and I'm the Director of Space Planning at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Today, I will be presenting the office space relocation of our Poison Control Center from 455 First Avenue to 215 Lexington Avenue in Manhattan. Next slide, please. Our Poison Control Center is a 24/7 emergency medical hotline that responds to inquiries both from the public and healthcare providers concerning intentional and unintentional exposures, as well as questions regarding possible poisoning, pesticides, medication, and medication safety. These cases are managed by nurses and pharmacists who are certified specialists in poison information with a physician backup available when needed. The reason for the relocation is that the building they're currently in, pictured here, is being planned for demolition and redevelopment by the EDC as part of its Innovation East project. Next slide, please. The proposed site is located in Kips Bay area of Manhattan in C62A Zone on the 12th floor of a 21-story building. The total area to be acquired is approximately 11,500 square feet. Next slide, please. The proposed space will include nine offices, 37 workstations, a large conference room for trainings, storage space for the program's educational material, and common areas. The program's hotline operates 24 hours a day and seven days a week, and is not open to the public. Next slide, please. Pictured here, you will see the proposed floor plan to accommodate programmatic and operational needs of the program. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. I have Maria Mercurio Zapata of Poison Control and John Kosa of DCAST here to answer any further questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Glad you're here. Let me start with Commissioner Doak.
Thank you. Can you classify how many calls you take in an average year?
We do approximately 80,000 calls of that. Roughly about 57,000 are human exposure cases.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
This question is for DCAST. I'm just wondering with the vacancy rate in commercial space in the city of New York, have you found that you've been getting more favorable rent levels than you have going back the past several years?
Well, it depends what neighborhood you're talking about, what type of space you're talking about. Office space downtown in the financial area is very competitive. There's a lot of vacancies, and they're Class B buildings that are not in great demand at the moment. In this case, we had a small catchment area. We need to be near the hospitals, and we didn't have, we could not go downtown for this space. And if you're looking at industrial space, it's an entirely different market, very tight. And if you need office space in the boroughs, it mostly doesn't exist, except downtown Brooklyn. But if you're out in Jamaica, Queens, or in the Bronx, there's very, very little space available. So the rents, you can pay more rent in Jamaica than you can in downtown Wall Street sometimes.
Because of the scarcity?
Yeah, because of the scarcity. There's a lot of space in downtown Wall Street available. Landlords are very competitive, not much in certain sections of the boroughs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold.
Just as a quick point to follow up with, 11,500 square feet, can you just talk for a second about how much space you have now at the current location? And also, how many people are there answering the 80,000 calls?
Okay, so we have approximately 35 staff. Of the 35 staff, 20 staff answer calls. The additional staff are either administrative or faculty. We have a lot of students, and we also have, we do a training session for all the emergency medicine residents that come to that practice in the city. So we have about 25 additional people that come in on a daily basis. Currently, right now, we have 15 offices. We have two conference rooms, and we have two offices where they take call. So by, in this new space, we would be utilizing the two conference rooms that you can see. It's like one giant conference room would be divided into two spaces to mimic the two conference rooms that we have. We only have nine offices in the new space, but we will have to work around the way we work, the way we do business now, because we do a lot of one-on-one training with these residents and students. But we'll figure it out. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
If I can add, the total square footage currently is about 9,000 square feet.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, got it. So it's a little bit of an expansion, but it sounds like it's not necessarily as good a layout. Am I catching that right?
Yeah, but it's close to the space that, we need to be close to Bellevue NYU. So it works. It will make it work.
Got it. And is this space built out already for you then?
It was, it had, yeah. So it was already built out. That's another reason why we were able to get it. were able to get it.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Benjamin.
One quick question, actually two questions, the first is, you said that a large percentage of the calls are about human interaction with some toxic substance, what are the other calls, about animals, or?
Oh, no, no, because we're part of the Health Department, we are actually the point program for all Health Department issues after hours, so anything that comes in after hours, we are liaison with the, you know, disease intervention and environmental, so we will take those calls, we make those information requests, so we can track them, and, you know, and then we forward them to wherever, whatever it is, so if it's, let's just use measles for an example, if a hospital has a measles case and they need to report, or they need assistance from the Health Department, they will call the Poison Center, we will contact or reach out to Disease Intervention On Call MD, and then, you know, and then we would follow up with whatever needs to be done, and we do that for both, for any reportable disease or reportable incidents that occurs in the city, 24/7, after hours.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Other questions could be, you know, a medicine question, like a person who's taking medication and gets a new medication, and they're wondering if there is an interaction, so there's like different categories of information questions, but the bulk of them are Department of Health administrative ones.
Okay, thank you very much, and my second question is that, you said that you need to be near NYU, but since you're not actually doing patient interactions, why do you need to be near the hospital, is it so that you can contact the doctors if there's a question?
No, we actually are, so our role with healthcare providers is we become part of the treating team, so what we do is we would, when the call comes in regarding a patient that's in the hospital, we would become part of that team and we would manage that patient's care, so we do patient management, yes. The reason why we have to be close to NYU Bellevue is because of the fact that we have a fellowship program, and our fellows, our toxicology fellows, need to be at the bedside within, you know, a few minutes of the call that we get to the Poison, to the Poison Center regarding that patient. So currently, we're across the street, so we would just walk right across the street, but, you know, this is going to be a five-minute, 10-minute walk, technically, so we do need to be at the bedside.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see any other questions for you, but before you go, I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you wish, to make a public service announcement as to what circumstances somebody should make use of the line and what the telephone number actually is, so before you close, I'll give you that, that opportunity.
Thank you very much, well, the New York City Poison Control Center is the oldest and most continually operated Poison Center in the country, our phone number, we have two numbers, our local one is 212-764-7667, or 212poisons, and our 800 number is 1-800-222-1222, and you would call the Poison Center for any intentional or unintentional exposure, no matter how small, so if a kid gets into something, or an adult unintentionally takes something that they're not supposed to take, you know, for example, you know, instead of using toothpaste, you use Bengay or something like that, these would be reasons to call the Poison Center. Thank you very much for listening.
Great, thank you for that, okay, with that, and we hope that people do not have that accident of Bengay instead of toothpaste, but certainly appreciate that as an example, and also the telephone number. We do not have members of the public wishing to testify on this item, so I will close the hearing on calendar number 14, the 215 Lexington Avenue Office Space for the Department of Health, thank all of you for your presence here today, and also for all of your good work. Let's open the hearing now on the next item, Madam Secretary.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 15, 10 Rockefeller Center Hotel Special Permit, CD5, C 240201ZSM, public hearing, in the matter of an application for a special permit concerning 10 Rockefeller Center Hotel Special Permit.
Great, on behalf of the applicant, we have Patrick Tierney, Alenio Azavedo, Rudy Taucher, and Robert Huberman. Whenever you're ready, go ahead, introduce yourself, and go ahead and get started.
Good, now I hear myself, great. My name's Robert Huberman, I'm from Herrick Feinstein Zoning and Land Use Council to the applicant, the rest of the team is on digitally, hopefully, and we're here to present 10 Rock Center to you, which you could see on the presentation right now, we're seeking a special permit to convert vacant office space into hotel space, and the 7th through 16th floors of the building highlighted in green here, also in the cellar and sub-seller of the building, next slide, please. Great, so, this is Rockefeller Center, as I'm sure you all recognize, the, the building is highlighted in red, the red rectangle around Building 11, it's on West 48th Street and West 49th Street, between Rockefeller Plaza and 6th. The building directly north of us, just to orient everyone, is 30 Rock, diagonal from us is the ice skating rink, the building we're in is where they filmed The Today Show, the building's located in a C525 district, in the special Midtown District, it's an individual landmark, is part of the larger Rockefeller Center campus, and it's on a larger zoning lot consisting of Buildings 8 and 14 to the left, and Building 5 to the right. The first six floors of the building right now are used for office and retail use, and the 7th through 16th floors, as I said, are vacant office space, they've been vacant for years, and we're proposing to convert it to about 136 hotel rooms. So as we all know, hotels are no longer permitted as of right in the city, a special permit is required pursuant to 74152, just kind of paraphrasing, I'm going to run through the findings very quickly, the first one is that, we have to show that a site plan incorporates elements that address potential conflicts between proposed and adjacent uses, the hotel use will not cause undue vehicular pedestrian congestion, and the hotel use will not impair future use of the development of the surrounding area. So, I'm just going to run through these really quickly, the first one, there won't be any conflicts between the hotel and adjacent uses, the hotel will have a dedicated entrance, which you could see here in green on West 48th Street, the north side of West 48th Street, hotel patrons that come in will be brought in by, by doormen, they will check in in the lobby, and they will be taken to two passenger elevators which provide direct access to the 7th and through 16th floors, so there's no intervening access in any of the floors there, so they'll be completely separated, it'll be a completely exclusive use, the other office and retail uses in the building won't have access unless they want to stay at the hotel. The second finding, there will be no undue vehicular pedestrian congestion, so this space is actually very interesting in Rockefeller Center because there's an underground service area which is accessed on West 50th Street between 5th and 6th, this is the entrance, it provides, all, all drop-offs and pickup service is done completely off-street, that will be the case here, it's the case in a lot of the buildings in Rockefeller Center, so, and, you know, as part of the environmental review that was done here, there was also no finding of significant adverse impact, I see I have five seconds, last note is, you can see the whole area around us, not surprisingly, is commercial.
Want you to address the findings, so, please address the findings, go ahead, even though you're out of time, let's count that as your first question here.
Thank you, so the finding, the last finding, is that the use will not impair future use or development of the surrounding area, I think this is relatively straightforward, again, the whole area is commercial as shown in the reddish orangish color, excuse me, here, so, you know, this use is going to promote, not impair, the use of the surrounding area, right, this is Rockefeller Center, especially during the holidays, this is a very tourist-active area, so, we think a hotel makes a lot of sense here, and that's it.
Great, thank you, just to start, are, are there any categories of deliveries that cannot be achieved through that 50th Street entrance that you showed us?
No, as I understand it, they will all be done underground, thank you.
Commissioner Doak.
Just following up from a question from the review session on Monday, can you speak to the benefits of converting an office building into a hotel versus a residential building, I don't know if you're the one to answer that, or perhaps somebody in the applicant team?
Yeah, I mean, I can address it, the, the, I mean, both uses can be done here, frankly, I think hotel's a little bit easier just because the, the orientation of the units is a little bit better for, for hotel use, and again, we think hotel in general is just a, a more, not more logical use, but it's a use that makes sense here, I know the city needs a lot of residential, but the city also needs hotels, and I think this is a good spot for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I think that's all the questions we have for you today, and I do not see members of the public wishing to be heard on this item, so I will close the hearing, thank you very much for being here, closing the hearing on calendar 15, the special permit for the hotel at 10 Rockefeller Center, Madam Secretary, what's next for us?
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 16 through 25, Brooklyn Yards, CDs 11 and 12, calendar number 16, C 230182ZMK, calendar number 17, N 230183ZRK, calendar number 18, C 230184ZSK, calendar number 19, C 230185ZSK, calendar number 20, C 230188ZSK, calendar number 21, C 230189ZSK, calendar number 22, C 230190ZSK, calendar number 23, C 230191ZSK, calendar number 25, C 230191ZSK, and I'll just note, calendar number 24, C 230195ZSK has been withdrawn, public hearing, in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permits concerning Brooklyn Yards.
Great, thank you, on behalf of an applicant team, I see Ken Fisher at the podium, we've got Rachel Skoll, Jay Valgora, and Joel Werksberger, Mr. Fisher, whenever you're ready, good to see you.
Good morning, Ken Fisher, Land Use Council for the applicant, congratulations Commissioner Mann, and congratulations Commissioner Benjamin for becoming senior in seniority as former land use directors on this commission. This project has been 40 years in the making, I know that because that's when Conrail sold the rights for a fee above a plane, and the right to build a platform with columns down. For all of those years, there've been three constants, one was that the population of the community was growing, the second was that the housing supply was not keeping pace, and the third was that nobody could figure out how to do this, or was willing to take on what turned out to be a very complicated project. That changed about 10 years ago, Nachman Coller, a local civic leader, ran for public office, called for the development of housing over the rail lines, a group of local real estate people took on the challenge, and are now ready to present the, the project to you. My colleague, Rachel Skoll, will explain the rather large number of actions that this takes, our architect Jay Valgora will lay out the design in some detail, so you see both the complexity and the elegance of the design solution, the project was approved by both community boards, because it splits the district, and it also was approved by the Borough President, of course, with recommendations in both cases. This is desperately needed housing in the neighborhood, it's an area where not much has been approved, and we think that it's worthy of your support, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Rachel Skoll, I'm with Cozen O'Connor Land Use Council for the applicant, so the development site here spans three blocks in the Borough Park neighborhood, and it's largely comprised of this rail cut above the LIRR right-of-way, it's currently zoned M1 and R5, and is well-served by public transit with two subway lines and a number of bus lines, and here are a few photos showing the current conditions, it's not currently very much to look at. So our, the LIRR and our predecessor and interest took interest to these respective properties pursuant to deed restrictions requiring the two parties to work together in perpetuity, development of each one's parcel requires agreement and cooperation among each other, and because of that, we have been working with LIRR and the MTA for nearly a decade on how to build this, I know that the, the mechanics of the platform are not exactly part of today's application, however, I want to point out that we have done test fits based on the LIRR's geometries for their existing and future rail lines, we've agreed on column-go zones, and we continue to work with LIRR and the MTA, I'm on the phone with them every week, every other week, so we're, we're moving this board as best we can between all of us, our client will be responsible for building their platform and its foundations, including deep foundations to ensure that the MTA and the LIRR can build out this rail trench and dig it down as they need to for their future plans at their cost, and there's a precedent for this in Flatbush and EDC project years ago that this builds upon. As Ken mentioned, we have quite the number of actions here, in order to construct above this rail cut, we need special permits to construct above a railroad right-of-way, we have bulk special permits related to a large-scale, special permits related to parking, authorizations for bicycle parking, and I'd like to call out that this site is being mapped for mandatory inclusionary housing, we did hear the comments at review session and the certification hearing, and the applicant agrees that the workforce option is not appropriate, and they are fully prepared to remove that from the application. And here is just a quick look at the rezoning, we are rezoning to a C45, R6, and R6 with a C24 overlay. These actions would allow the construction of 14 buildings containing approximately 56,000 square feet of office, 7,500 square feet of retail, 270 dwelling units, and 3,674 square feet of public open space. The three blocks will be connected by a private open space network, it forms a pathway that you see dotted here in green, this is directly adjacent to the rear of the buildings on the first and second zoning lots, and the reason that it is private is this really serves as a rear yard-like condition for these residents, it creates space between them and the neighboring buildings, and in order to provide the appropriate amount of privacy, we felt it was appropriate for this to be a private space. It is not an open space for seeker purposes, and we are providing on 60th Street a playground that creates open, active open space much needed in this community. Here is a summary of the development, as Ken mentioned, community boards 11 and 12 both voted in favor of the application, it was on the condition that we increase the number of parking spaces from 40 to 80, and now I'm going to hand it off to Jay Valgora.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you Rachel, I'm Jay Valgora, I'm a partner in Studio V Design and Planning with Kathy Chan, I'm really happy to show you this project, I'm very excited about the potential that it would have for this community, I'll show you the individual blocks, and I'll try to get into the renderings, it's really unusual the manner in which it cuts through the blocks, and we try to be extremely sensitive to the character of this community, creating generally smaller buildings that would really fit in and be commensurate with its context. We did do one slightly taller building, it's interesting, you heard the testimony earlier that in the outer boroughs, there is still need for office space, this is immediately adjacent to the train, the elevated train track there, on New Utrecht, and it actually forms kind of a sound buffer to the remainder of the residential development, as well as makes it a transit-oriented development, the vast majority of the project is residential, and you can see that, and it's an unusual combination of types, it's really small apartment buildings that are six-story, that are elevator-accessed, and smaller walk-ups that are really four-story, or four-story with a mezzanine, that really fit into the character and scale of this community. We really worked hard, as we developed all of those complex plans for the platform and for the railroad build, to find affordable means of constructing small-scale housing that would fit into this neighborhood, I'm proud of the fact that actually the project was called up by Justin Davidson, the architecture critic, for really creating housing in those leftover spaces of our city where they're really needed. You can see the individual components here, and how we tried to fit it in with small retail, with mostly residential, using real Brooklyn housing types, like those kind of four-story walk-ups, and like those small six-story apartments, like trying to find something that's commensurate with the scale of this community. Here you can see the plan, and Rachel referred to that a little bit earlier, you can see this kind of public spaces, we have a plaza on Utrecht and the playground on the other side, and then this small series of kind of green areas that pass through that actually allow families and people that are working there to access them and create this pedestrian connection, as well as, most importantly, a rear yard that actually creates privacy and greenery in those areas. I think when you look at the renderings, it hopefully brings this to light, you can see here overall how we tried to create something that would be divided up, it wouldn't be a monolithic development, it would be made of very small buildings, it would be made with different materials and characters, articulations and heights, fenestration, so that it would really kind of fit into the context of this community. These are views from the different side, and you can see how the individual buildings face onto the street, how we tried to create smaller stoop gardens and green areas throughout the entire project, to try to bring greenery and character to the neighborhood, hopefully you can see it here on this view from 51st Street. There had been some questions, and I'm happy to speak to them, or also in answers, about accessibility, because the walk-up housing type really fits well into this neighborhood, we worked very closely with one of the best accessibility consultants, Dominic Marinelli, he's actually with Accessibility Associates, he helped actually write some of our legislation for accessibility, he worked closely with me on this project, so I can guarantee the commission, because you've asked this question, that all of the ground floor units are fully accessible, it actually meets all the law, and of course, all of the elevator units are accessible, so it's the vast majority of them, so it fully meets all of our accessibility needs, that's very important for me as an architect and an applicant. There's some question about this, and sometimes I regret this rendering, because it was done illustratively, to show that there is a fence that actually prevents people from getting harmed or going up to the edge of it, and you can see it with the greenery, but we worked with Ken Smith, one of the best landscape architects, he does a lot of public spaces in the city, so we have very expensive, very extensive, sorry, tall planting all along the edge, that's meant to kind of create a screen, a buffer, to ensure that people can't be harmed, but that the walkway is very attractive, we sort of showed it lower here, so you could see the people and see the walkway, but in fact, there's very extensive greenery along this edge that shelters it and that provides a private along this edge that shelters it and that provides privacy and comfort and amenity for the residents. So this also shows some of the entries and passageways between the public streets. Here you can see the view from the elevated rail line and the kind of entry with these sort of archway motifs, as well as the public plaza to the left, which is very important, because we created publicly accessible green areas, as Rachel noted, in this community that desperately needs them. So we really tried to create a varied and rich architecture that would fit into this community, that would create much-needed housing, that would create both market rate and affordable housing, and most importantly, also create open space, greenery, a playground, bike parking, and something that would really fit into the entire character of the community. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. First, let me congratulate you on the variability of the design in that it is, it does not look or feel like a monolith, and I know that was deliberate, and that is clear. So congratulations on that.
Thank you, Chair. We really appreciate that.
And I just had one, one design question and then one strategic question. The design question is, you located the apartment buildings in particular areas in contrast to the walk-up buildings. Say a little bit more about how you thought about where you would emphasize those relative to one another.
Oh, an excellent question, and I very much appreciate it. So there's a lot of rules relative to planning, and one of them is GCL thirty-six, which is General City Law thirty-six, which stipulates that every building must have an entryway onto a map street. And these sites were such a challenge, because they're sort of these diagonal sites cutting through the middle of the block. So what we did is everywhere along the public streets, and I think there was a plan that shows it here, we created entrances directly into the buildings. And where some of the longer sites kind of disappear, if you will, into the interior of the block, or the through-lot sites that go over the rail cut into the interior of the block, there we had to make sure that we did a larger building so that it had an entrance directly. So that was the reason for the six-story buildings. You can see the one, for example, to the left and the one to the right, were in order to make sure that we had direct street access and, of course, fully conform to the law. And then this mixture of types allowed us then to fully address the legal requirements, but also optimize the value of the site and create the most housing.
Thank you. And then the other question I had, and you can answer this or any member of the team, is really the possibility of this as precedent for other housing developments above this particular trench. Obviously, it goes some distance. What are the things that you have seen here that you would flag either as opportunities or challenges for those who might look at similar sorts of things in the future?
Well, I would say three things. First, we're very fortunate that our firm, Studio V Design and Planning, does a great deal, bless you, does a great deal of public work. So actually, the city themselves is very often our client, and we actually worked with the city, meaning the EDC, and the MTA to work on railoverbuilds, actually, for Sunnyside Yards and in particular at Arch Street. Second, in particular for this site, we worked so closely and with this great team with the MTA that actually we believe that we've established what could be the precedent, as you indicate, Chair, so for these kind of sites. Because the Bay Ridge line, we all know, is planned, of course, for the IBX. So all, and you know, the governor has submitted the plans for creating passenger rail here. So when we did the platform, we actually figured it out so that we could accommodate the full future IBX and the expanded rail lines and do the housing. So that was the reason Justin Davidson did that article in The New Yorker and Curb, because he was saying, these are the kind of sites we could reveal. But the last part, this is kind of funny to tell you. This literally happened last night. I was out in Flatbush, and there is another residential group there on the same line. And last night, they had me speak to a coropter board that would like to develop two acres of land over this rail line. And when I presented this project to them and told them that I would be meeting with the commission today, they engaged me to do another project to hopefully build another six hundred units on this rail line. So I hope to be back in front of this commission in another six months with another project to add more much-needed housing on the same rail line, literally as a precedent for this project. Thank you.
If I could just add, Mr. Chair, this project was green-lighted by Janelle Lieber when he was the head of capital construction for the MTA. I've had conversations with him since. He's very interested in this as proof of concept. There may be opportunities along the rail line where the development rights have not been sold for them to capture some revenue. But I think the critical lesson that we learned was the bigger the platform, the more expensive, the bigger the building, the more expensive the platform. If you do stuff that's in scale with the neighborhood, and most of this rail line goes through low-scale neighborhoods, you'll find that you have support, not an opposition, plus it pencils out.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin and Commissioner Murrin.
Hi. My question is for John, I think.
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jay.
Jay. I say John, he says Jay.
Please, Commissioner.
And I think we were on ULI together, maybe.
Yes, I've been a member of the Urban Land Institute Advisory Board.
I had a couple of questions about the ADA issue.
Of course.
The first is, how many of the apartments of the two-hundred-and-seventy DUs are on that first floor in the four-story buildings?
Excellent question. Well, the number of accessible units, which I guess is the answer I would give you, is there are two-hundred-and-seventy units, so one-hundred-and-eighty of them are fully accessible, or technically under the law, fully adaptable, is what I would say, right? So that means only ninety of them, no, eighty of them, are on the upper floor of the walk-ups. The other thing is, the interesting thing about the walk-ups, just to add this, is they allowed us to do a greater variety of larger units with more bedrooms, which is something that developers don't often do and that are very often desired by communities, and in particular in this community, by the way. So that actually allowed us the freedom to do a flexible number of more units with larger bedrooms. But the vast majority of them, to answer your question, Commissioner, are accessible.
And in the, I just want to know how many were in the four-story, how many of the four-story units are accessible?
So I actually don't know that number off the top of my head. I could estimate that it's probably twenty of that number that I gave you, which was the hundred-and-ninety that are accessible.
Okay.
That's an estimate, but approximately.
And what size are those units? Are they varied occupancy sizes? Or are they, you know, one of the problems that occurred with the walk-up situation in partnership housing and in Nehemiah was that the units on the first floor, because they had the stairs, the hallway, sometimes a garage, were often studios and ones. Can you tell me something about the size of these units?
Sure. Well, first of all, the, and there might have been some confusion maybe in the earlier presentation. So all the accessible units on the ground floor don't use the stoops. The stoops really go to the second floor, kind of like a classic Brooklyn situation. So really, one comes in directly off the street. So there's no accessibility issues or ramps or stairs of any sort. So they come in directly from the street. And actually, the stoop gardens, even for those sort of street-level units which are accessible, provide privacy, visual screening and so forth. Again, kind of a classic Brooklyn housing type, which I love, you know. So then the unit types actually vary. They're all different unit types, because you can see in the configuration of the plan in front of you that we tried to really fit them in. So they're, you can see they're all different shapes and sizes. So I would say they vary between one and three bedrooms, and there's a whole variety of unit types on the ground floor.
Commissioner, because of MIH, there's some correlation between the MIH units and the other units. So the, we haven't done the complete layouts yet, but the stacking plan generally favors larger units, and there are virtually no studios. I think there's no studios in these townhouses at all. There are a couple of studios just to round out in the apartment buildings, but in the, in these townhouses, there are at least one bedrooms, and I think in some cases, maybe two bedrooms at the ground floor as well.
Okay. Thank you. But speaking of the, and speaking of the stacking of the units, there was a diagram provided of the layout of the apartments that showed essentially three, perhaps four, two-bedroom units per floor in the large building, and no threes. So I know that those diagrams were just illustrative. So do you have a better idea of the distribution of apartment sizes over the two-seventy?
So the Commissioner is right. The plans are illustrative. And to be honest, even as we've worked through the process, we've like changed the unit mix many times because, you know, we have a total unit number. We've always strived, and in particular in this project, I can tell you, to create a great variety of units. But I couldn't actually tell you a precise mix, because they vary quite a lot, and the ULIR doesn't dictate it. I don't mean to evade the question. I just know that I don't have an honest answer that I could give you. We can, and Rachel can mention this too, that the community board did ask us to do some larger units. And when I did the layout of the walk-up units, they worked particularly well for that, which I really liked, that we could create very efficient but really wonderful, I think, you know, larger units that get up to two stories, three stories. Maybe, Rachel, if you want to go a little further.
And that's because of the mezzanine, the fourth-floor mezzanine?
The mezzanine in part, because the mezzanine, sorry, the mezzanine also allows us, under-zoning, technically in the ULIR docs, it's shown as five stories, but from a zoning point of view, or, sorry.
Because it's accessed only from the apartment below.
Exactly. Technically, from a DOB point of view, it's a four-story building with a mezzanine, which actually gives us very advantages, and that allows us to do extra bedrooms. That's correct, Commissioner.
So the unit mix that we looked at in the ULIR was about forty percent one bedrooms and sixty percent twos and threes. There are no studios in this development. That's something that's very important to this community. In the past year or so, though, we've been talking to the local council members and the local community boards, and there is a desire for even larger units and fewer one-bedrooms. So those conversations are ongoing. We have done a unit mix where we would have eighty-one two bedrooms, eighty-five three bedrooms, twenty-one four bedrooms, and it reduces the one bedrooms to fifty-five units, or twenty-three percent. So more than seventy-five percent of the building would be family units. However, when you do that, the overall unit count does go down, which is why those conversations are ongoing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My last question is a policy one, which you may want to respond to, which is, in the analysis that was provided to us, the market rate rents are lower than the MIH rents. So why would we do MIH here?
Why would you do MIH at all?
Here. Why would we map it if the market rate rents are less than the rents permitted under MIH?
Well, I'm not sure all of, I'm not sure the market study and all of the rents are inconsistent. And I had some questions about the market study itself, because it's a unique sub-submarket. But if, and we're withdrawing the workforce housing option, as Rachel mentioned. But if the commission would choose not to map us for MIH, we certainly wouldn't object to that. I'm not sure how City Hall would feel.
But if I could just speak to the numbers that you're talking about, those were based on the workforce option. The reason the workforce option was included in this application, I mean, this application's been in progress for a very long time, especially during the time where we didn't have an affordable New York or a four-eighty-five-X. So it was really put in to provide flexibility when no one knew it was going to happen, and we didn't know what the council members would be looking for. So the rents that you saw, I echo what Ken said about the market study, but the workforce rents that you saw would no longer be applicable to this project. We'd be looking at options, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Murrin?
Thank you, Chair. So on Monday, I presented a pose, a series of questions related to the platform, because of course, it supports the housing above. And you've answered, Cozen has answered a few questions about who's going to dig out after the piles and footings go in. But is the rail yard providing any assistance economically towards the structure of the platform? Or is this all going to be borne by the residential and office development above?
So the development is paying for the platform. It's playing for the columns, and it's paying for the foundation for the columns in the zones that we've worked out with the MTA. We're also providing some safety equipment that they've asked for, and there'll be further engineering review once we get to the construction drawing stage, as would be the case with any MTA project in the zone of influence, but particularly here. In terms of what happens in the future, it is designed so that the MTA could dig down if they have to, and that would be at their expense. The other expense associated with that for us would be that if we shut, the rail line isn't used very much currently, but if we shut it down, we're responsible for the cost of the shutdown during the construction period.
Well, my concern for cost was basically the fact that then your units would, you're absorbing the cost into your pro forma. So the units would reflect, that cost would reflect the price points of rent. So that's the reason for the pointed questions about the platform and who would pay for it.
The corollary to that, of course, the reason we don't have garages, we don't have to do any excavation, except for the columns themselves. There's no foundation to put in. The platform effectively is our foundation. So there's an offset of costs compared to a conventional development.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duette?
Thank you. So I love the project. It creates desperately needed housing in an area that is starving for it, and certainly creates it out of thin air. So a couple of questions to you. Timeline, phasing, and if you can speak to which programs you're going to be taking advantage of to get this project off the ground. Is it going to be, are you vested already under four-twenty-one-A, or are you going for four-eighty-five-X, or what? Can you speak to that?
So we're currently looking at four-eighty-five-X. We're not vested under four-twenty-one-A. We have not broken ground here. We are waiting on this approval, as well as working things out with the MTA on the specifics of columns. In terms of construction and phasing, the idea would be to start at one end or the other. We could say, starting from the southwest, making our way to the third block. Start with the platforms. As we go, if we could do all three platforms from a financing standpoint, that would be the least intrusive to the railroad and their operations. But otherwise, we would kind of go in order, one, two, three, as one platform's completed, start building upon that platform in order to get this done as quickly as possible with as little impact on both the railroad and the neighbors as possible. And right now, that railroad is one, maybe one freight line a day. It's very little used. We definitely would like to get this done before it becomes a commuter rail.
So just to...
Twenty thirty. Our build year is twenty thirty.
Twenty, that's my...
All right. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation and for addressing some of the questions that have come up during the process. I think that this is a very interesting precedent, and I agree with the comments that the chair made in terms of the quality of the design in terms of distributing the bulk according to neighborhood character. So I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. One is, I think, just to follow up on something you said in the presentation, which I appreciate. I very much concur with the board president in terms of making sure that this is not going to, or this would be really aligned and under any circumstances, sort of like interfere with the future plans for the rail line. And so I just wanted to understand a little bit. Number one, you mentioned that you had been in constant contact with the MTA. When do you expect to have like an assessment, like a written assessment position on their end in terms of the results of their evaluation of the process? And along the same lines, I would love to hear what's been the extent of the conversation with the OT and EDC. And by the same token, when do you expect to have, so like a formal evaluation, so that we can anticipate, you know, our review of that before the vote?
So let me start by saying that in addition to extensive discussions with the MTA, including a reevaluation by them after the IBX was announced, when they didn't even know what mode they were going to be using, confirming that the same column zones would work. Jay's team designed it so that they could accommodate two freight lines and two passenger lines, regardless of what that mode was. We met early on with the Port Authority. We met with the Economic Development Corporation. We met with Congressman Nadler's staff. He no longer represents the area, but his interest in rail freight continues. And then, as the project evolved, the MTA became our principal point of contact. In connection with one of the special permits, we received a letter from them. You received a letter from them that confirmed that the, basically, the design through the column zones would not interfere with any future use of their right-of-way. The construction drawings are not yet prepared. We need this approval. Then we can get our financing. Then we can do the construction drawings. The MTA will be looking over our shoulder very closely the entire way. And I should mention, because you asked, we also have had extensive meetings with City DOT because of the street bridges that separate the blocks to make sure our construction will not interfere in any way with the existing street bridges or with their future maintenance. So those operational issues have been substantially worked out and will be baked into the project as we move forward in order for us to get the MTA approvals.
The, can I, just quick, just for clarification, those MTA approvals, when are you expecting them? Like, what's the, help us understand the timeline for that.
Sure. So once the, once the project is approved, we'll move forward with the, moving from schematic to construction drawings. The DOB process will be interesting with this project as well. But during the course of that, we'll be presenting the different plans to the MTA for their engineering approval. So whether that process is going to take from now until, well, from the council approval until we start construction, whether that's going to be eighteen, eighteen months or thirty-six months is kind of hard to say at this point. But we want to move to that stage as quickly as possible. And of course, our lenders will be insisting that we do that as well. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. It does. Thank you. That's very helpful. Specifically on your conversations with the DOT, is there anything that you've received in writing that you can share with us? I mean, I'm sure we can also request that, but I'm wondering if there's already something that we can see from your... if there's already something that we can see from your conversations with them?
Sure. I don't think we have, we don't have a letter in the same way that we do from the M T A, since it wasn't a requirement of the findings. However, we did work closely with, uh, D O T staff, as well as city planning staff throughout the process of preparing this application. And the result of that, in order to make sure that D O T does not get left out of this process, our drawings submitted with this application, which we hope will be approved, do have a note on them that everything that we submit to D O T has to be submitted to both the M T A and D O T for review and comment. So, we will not be moving forward without them. We will not be able to pull anything at D O B, or maybe even have reviews at D O B, without going to them first. So, they're very much tied into this process going forward, as we figure out the more technical aspects of what's going on below the platform.
Thank you. Yeah. I, I, I understand that, and I, 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 you know, eh, respect that. It's just that, you know, it's our role to also make sure that before we approve it, there's very, like, as much clarity as we can, in terms of, like, really making sure that, because this is a priority for the board president, for the commission, for the city better.
Perhaps a way to clarify it, uh, we work for the M T A. They're a client of Studio V Design and Plan. We're currently renovating seven subway stations with them right now, as well as we worked with them to do the rail rebuild at Arch Street. So, the M T A is a very specific process, which it may help to, you know, inform the commission. So, they've already reviewed all the schematic designs and approved them and allowed us to go forward. They won't approve the final designs until they're engineered, which will actually require the full and complete engineering. And of course, we wouldn't undertake that unless we had the approval of the commission in order to go forward with the project at all. It's a bit of a chicken and egg thing. All I can tell you is, we brought in Arup, one of the best engineers in the world. The clients spared no expense to have them do extensive studies over a three-year period. They do extensive rail rebuilds. Uh, one could argue they're one of the top two engineering firms in the world, and special, their specialty is actually in transportation systems and rail rebuilds. So, we work directly with them. So, I have extraordinary confidence that having worked with the M T A, the fact they're a client, we hired one of the best engineering firms, we reviewed all the platform positions, all of the column positions. The only thing they're waiting on is the final engineering that literally says how much rebar goes into each column. And that really is a, a detail, I would argue, that gets reviewed at a later date. So, I would just like to give the commission the full assurance that this issue has been addressed extremely thoroughly, and there is great confidence. If anything, the M T A has expressed their, uh, appreciation for the fact that I think we've established the precedent that actually, as the chair mentioned, allows them to actually look at the rest of the line and actually develop further housing.
Thank you for addressing the question, and, you know, if, if anything that you can submit in writing to us would be appreciated.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that there's anything other than the notation on the plans themselves. Um, but I did want to note that the, the Brooklyn office was very thoughtful about making sure that the D O T issues were addressed, and I don't think the application would have advanced had, had they not been satisfied.
Thank you. Do I have time for another question? Thank you. Um, I also appreciate the, the response to the questions along the process on the open space ratio. And so, I think it's, it's really clear that, you know, obviously, you, there are no existing open spaces, but the, eh, as with the no-action, eh, eh, open space ratios, um, this area and the proposed, um, eh, open space ratio is, is under the optimal, eh, open space guidelines. And so, you know, I, I, I wanted to build on that, to, to go back to the question about why not allowing public access on an open space that is already fenced, you know, out of, of, for the residents. And so, you know, I, I was really, I, I actually should have said this earlier. I, I really like the gesture, the urban design gesture, to have the arches in a place that invites the public in. But then, of course, you know, eh, somewhat, right? Or, or, or just to the commercial spaces, right? And so, I think this would have been, eh, or this could be still, sort of like a great neighborhood amenity. Um, it sounds like you were already identifying the need to fence it out. So, so I'm wondering if you can help us explain a little bit, you know, why exactly do you feel that it wouldn't provide the privacy that you're arguing for, uh, while at the same time, sort of like allowing people to use it, to just cut through?
Sure. Well, I guess I'd answer it in a few ways. And again, very much appreciate these questions, because we gave a great deal of thought to them. So, first, we are concerned a little bit for privacy, because as Rachel had mentioned, it's a rear yard condition. So, people's bedroom windows will be going directly against it. And the walkway of necessity, given the aspect of the site, is relatively narrow. It's only varies between perhaps ten and fifteen feet. And plus, you know, we wanted to create green buffers. So, you'll really be very close to somebody's bedroom. So, we wanted to be very careful about that, because we did want to provide, it's not really commercial. It's up against the residential, so it is up against all the residences. So, that was our main concern, is privacy. Second, we did want to make sure we created a public component. That's why we actually did, and in close consultation with staff and with a lot of great input from the community, we created the public plaza, which is actually in front of the train station. And also, very proud of the children's playground, because Ken designed a really cool children's playground. And we did bike parking, uh, which is also underneath the arches. So, we tried really hard to make those, uh, you know, exciting public spaces. And then, lastly, people will use it. There'll be two-hundred-and-seventy residences. I imagine there'll be about, you know, four-hundred, or there's large families here, possibly more people using that. And so, we do anticipate that it will still be used by an appropriate number of people. And so, we're really trying to seek the right balance between public and private, because we do care a lot about how we design public spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Mann?
Great. Thanks for the thoughtful presentation. I just had a question about the station design in a world where the I B X gets built. Have you had conversations with the M T A about a potential station entrance, uh, adjacent to the office building?
So, the M T A hasn't really finalized their plans at all. To be honest, we're probably ahead of them. So, I'm glad of the fact that we were able to accommodate the full rail lines, and I won't bore the commission with the details, because the complexity of that was quite enormous, including the dynamic envelope of all the four different train tracks. And this is actually one of the narrowest points of the line, too. But, so they haven't really decided where they want to put stations. However, there is one small portion of the site, uh, kind of a triangle that we didn't build on, that we actually think is the optimum future site for a rail station, in consultation with them. So, I won't say the M T A has chosen that, but we dedicated one small portion that is not being platformed over, which would be the perfect place to create access for rail platforms. So, we've already provided that in advance, which I think will actually help address your question.
Got it. Would you mind just showing that on, on a plan?
Sure. So, that's not actually part of the site. It's part of the property that's owned by our, uh, client.
So, it's not part of the application?
It's, it's left of the, the rail tracks here. There's a small triangle. It's, we don't really have anything that shows it, since it's not part of the application itself.
Right.
Um, but what I will say is, M T A has not expressed interest in a, oh, you can see it there, sorry, on the, on the left side of the page.
Got it.
Um, the M T A has not expressed interest in an I B X station directly adjacent to these properties. I believe there'll be one within walking distance, and I forget whether it's just east or just west. But we do have this extra little triangle that's not part of this site that would also be available.
Got it. Yeah. I mean, I, I think this is obviously a very exciting project. I think my only concern here is making sure that, as the development proceeds ahead of the I B X planning, that we don't preclude station locations where they're needed. And this is obviously a potential transfer station point between I B X and the Q. Um, and obviously, if you're building a ten-story office building, there may be some ADA access opportunities to do elevators below grade, um, where the I B X is trenched, right? So, I think, I think having a little, I know this is hard for you all, being ahead of the project, but I guess, having a little more clarity from the M T A on station design thinking, so we're not precluding future station locations, seems important here.
I, I can tell you, based on our conversations with the M T A, that if they think we might preclude anything, they have told us to stop.
Okay.
Um, this is also, we are directly above the rail track, which isn't normally where you might find the station necessarily. If you had an elevator down from our site, it would go directly into the, the rails potentially. Um, if, if an elevator were needed directly adjacent to our site, there are still, uh, spots that aren't being platformed over, over, or we do have these public spaces. However, this isn't something that the M T A, M T A has raised, and they have not been hesitant to raise things that might be in their way.
Understood. So, maybe this is a comment for the chair, then. I think, just for us to think about, you know, as the I B X project proceeds, perhaps, whether, like the Second Avenue subway, we think about zones for easement areas, where the M T A has to affirmatively say, if development happens here, uh, you need to check with us to make sure there's no station planning. So, again, I know it's early days on, on the project, and appreciate that it's challenging for developer to help the M T A sort out station locations, but might be something for us to, to think about.
We actually did have to do that, um, as part of zoning for accessibility. We're, because we are within, at the time, it was because we were within the certain location of the subway, but we had to go to the M T A and make sure they didn't need a easement in this area for an elevator, and they, they said they don't need one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let me go to Commissioner Goodrich.
Uh, the community wants about eighty parking spots. The borough president, Reynoso, wants less, at lea- forty or less. Um, what are your intentions with that? Which one will you, I was curious about that. Which one will you choose?
We, we, um, uh, we recognize the tension. It is a transit-oriented, uh, development. Uh, but one of the things about larger apartments is that they tend to attract families, and many of the families in this area have, um, use, you know, cars and vans, uh, for, for everyday use. Um, there was a perception from the community boards that there was a severe shortage of, of parking in the area. Um, we started off with, um, the minimum that we could negotiate with your staff. This was before City of Yes. Uh, when we got to the community board, it was, uh, unmistakable that they wanted more parking. We were able to accommodate that, basically by taking the same, uh, area. And by the way, I should mention, the developers actually bought a piece of property at Terrafirma, so, for the parking, which I think is pretty unusual in, in New York. Um, we, we, uh, we agreed to put in stackers, so that we could double the amount of parking. I think if you ask many of the people on the community board, they would have liked a lot more parking. Uh, some of them wanted one parking space for every apartment. Um, but, uh, they understood that it was a trade-off between the viability of the project and, and being able to accommodate it. This was the compromise we came up to. We respect the borough president's, uh, uh, position. Um, but in this case, um, based on our conversations with the community board and with the local council members, uh, the decision was made to go to approximately eighty spaces using stackers.
Okay. One more question. I want to follow up on Commissioner Benjamin's question about the affordability. So, the workforce option is no longer being used, and, you know, uh, one thing about me, before I ask this question, is I'll just say, I really hate affordable housing that's not actually affordable. Uh, it's just right up there with, like, Trump. Like, I really hate it. Um, so, with that being said, one of the options I'm not hearing is, you know, because I heard the other option where the market rate is lower than the proposed M I H here. Uh, but the other option I'm not hearing is just having a lower A M I. Um, is that considered? Uh, just, you know, because it, it is a drastic, I mean, I know it's not being used, but it, it was very drastic. I mean, we're talking about a neighborhood with the average household income being fifty-thousand dollars, and then this, the starting point being one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars for one person. So, you know-
True. We, so again, the workforce housing option, you know, which we had preserved up until now, because of a lot of uncertainty about the project, is not being pursued.
Right.
Um, I believe we're mapping it for option one and option two, with the intention of using option two. Um, the, the housing market in this area is so tight, so tight, um, that, um, we think there's a need at every income level, including with the income-restricted units, there's, there's a need for some flexibility there. Um, it's a working-class and middle-class neighborhood. It, it also depends on how you define, uh, the immediate, uh, neighborhood. Um, we think that, um, when we get into more detailed discussions with H B D, uh, for the regulatory agreement, um, we're going to see where their priorities are. We know that they have certain things that they're now requiring in terms of how the average is skewed over the course of, of, of the project. Um, we also think that with the larger units, um, unless we're, you know, obviously, there's some category of folks that will have subsidies from, from the government, and they can afford whatever F E P S or Section Eight will provide. But for folks who are, are paying their own way, uh, working people with lower incomes, the three and four-bedroom units may be difficult for them to carry, and it would also be a real burden on us, um, to have a disproportionate number of those below a, a level where they can, they can support the project. So, that's a long way of saying that, um, we think this is the right solution for the, for the neighborhood. Again, it's what we heard from the community boards and from the council members from the area. Um, we know that we'll have some discussions with H B D before we get to a final unit mix. That'll, of course, depend on how we finally design, uh, the, the unit counts at the end. Um, but we believe that any apartment that opens up for somebody who's income-restricted, who's coming from the neighborhood, and we rec- look, I, I just want to make this point also. Um, we all know how difficult it is to win community approval, as the percentage of local preference has gone down, community board preference has gone down. Um, but we also know that this is not a neighborhood where a lot of people are necessarily going to want to come from the outside. We're committed to working with local organizations from all of the communities, uh, in this immediate area, to create the maximum opportunities for people to, uh, win the lottery, uh, by applying, uh, to get into the income-restricted housing. We also intend to market extensively in the area, uh, for people. We think a lot of it is going to be word of mouth, and people who have, you know, just families, they don't want to, they don't want to leave. Um, so I think that, that we're going to make a good faith effort. Um, these folks are very familiar with, with, uh, not just the market, but they're very familiar with what the needs are in the community. They all live in the community. They all have family members who are desperate for, for housing, who may not be in the same position that they are, uh, to have, uh, to have, uh, housing options. So, I think in this particular, unique set of circumstances, uh, giving us the flexibility to, to use both option one, option two, and find the right balance and mix in our discussions with H B D would be the appropriate solution.
Okay. So, just to sum up, option one and op- option one and option two is on the table, but the actual mix with the A M I and lowering the A M I, that's not clear yet.
Correct. And that'll come out of our discussions with H B D, with the elected officials and the community board, as, once we get the, the floor layouts and the unit counts locked.
And, and then, let's just say that it, the discussions with H B D don't prove, hypothetically speaking, don't prove fruitful, and then what, what happens then?
Well, without a regulatory agreement, we can't pull a building permit. Now, I happen to think that it's a ministerial act, uh, on H B D's part, uh, under the zoning resolution. H B D doesn't share my opinion. Um, so, we look forward to having that conversation with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go back to Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah. Um, one last design question, or series of design questions, which is about the rear of the property where you have the walkway, and you have the railroad under that platform. And then, you, you had a graphic of it, um-
That's with the fence.
Yeah, with, that had the, the fence and then without the fence.
Right. I hesitate to bring up the fence, the dreaded fence rendering, because I've got these beautiful renderings that actually show it, and somehow in these presentations are done, yeah, this isn't the one I wanted. So-
Uh, I'm concerned about the treatment, of the, the edge treatment of both the property that is the railroads clearly, which is underneath, and of the adjacent property, which is yours, and whether this rendering is what you're planning to do, or whether it's just kind of a space saver for discussions with the M T A.
Right. So, um, to clarify it a little bit, first of all, the adjacent property is not ours, and so-
Which is to the, in my line, to the right of the wall?
Right. So, that is, that is not our property.
Who's this? Is it the M T A's, or?
No, it's owned by other property owners.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's just, you know, adjacent property owners. So, at the, the edge of the platform is really, um, you know, the edge of our property. And so, there is, to try to explain it, and, and actually to give assurance to the commission, too, because the rendering drives me a little bit crazy also.
Thank you.
And you'd be amazed how complex it is to get renderings in front of you guys in the process. But I can tell you this, the, the Ularp plans, and I can say this with assurance when we work it out with Ken, the planting plans, the open space plans, as you know, are, are obligatory, statutory. So, it means like every plant we have in there is like a plant that's in the final plan. So, it's not like illustrative, you know? It's funny, the unit labs might be illustrative, but the plants are the plants. And so, to assure the commission, basically what it means is, we have a whole planted zone, and it's, you know, included a full, robust planting plan of mainly like tall junipers and evergreens and things like that, that'll be quite dense, and really about six feet tall. And then, behind that, and he's really detailed this, and he even included some really cool benches, and even these like porch swings, you know, just to tell you what you're actually, the earlier renderings, and they're in the Ularp docks. So, when I describe this to you. So, they're wonderful and creative, and slightly whimsical even, which is kind of Ken's style. He does a lot of public spaces in New York. Behind that's a fence, so that a child couldn't climb through the plants and somehow fall on the platform below. So, basically, there's a robust, deep green area, at least two to three feet, of tall evergreen plantings that runs mostly the continuous length, plus other flowers and deciduous plantings. And then, behind that is a robust security fence that prevents a person or a child from ever somehow climbing over and being able to fall on the track. That's basically what we have. And it, it's in the Ularp docks, and I apologize that the rendering doesn't illustrate that as well as I would prefer.
Okay. Because I was concerned if someone is standing on the property adjacent that you don't own, um, that the tracks could become an attractive nuisance.
So, to this day, the tracks are, you know, there, and there are various fences and so forth that the M T A maintains for them. And so, and in fact- And so and in fact, sometimes people actually do get through those and get onto the tracks. And as a matter of fact, there happens to be, you know, an encampment of some people that are unhoused that are using portions of that today. So that does happen, but it's not part of our property. And I would argue that our scheme will actually, you know, alleviate many of those conditions, at least within this property, in order to make sure that it's safe and secure. If there are adjacent properties where they have their own fences, I can't really speak to that other than to say that we would hope the M T A will do all they can to maintain those fences.
But you will not be responsible for that area that is in white south of your project, just which is, I believe, what we're talking about, where you would gain access to the tr- where one could presumably.
Much as I'd like as a designer to design the rest of the neighborhood, I can only design the uh property that my client controls.
Also, also Commissioner, um it it probably goes without saying, but for the record, right now, you can, if you're going to jump the fence and risk your life to go down there, you can do that from either side. When this is built, you'll only be able to do it from one side. And as the M T A starts to use it more actively for passenger and rail traffic, we think it'll become less attractive um than it is uh than it is now.
Or more attractive to train nuts.
Well, uh yeah, we can't, we can't solve for every variable. But I think the other thing that that's worth noting is that because there will be people living on that side of the building, the bedrooms will be there. There'll be more eyes and ears uh on it now. This is a relatively desolate area, uh you know, zoned industrial. Um and we think that people, you know, people will be keeping an eye on their backyards, in effect.
Okay, I would just offer a piece of advice that perhaps you, in your many discussions with the M T A, between the two of you, you could work out some more attractive solution to those kinds of concerns.
Understood, and we'll 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 happy to take that back to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um just want to make sure there are no other questions before I go back. Commissioner Osorio, okay, we'll wrap it up with Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Uh just a quick follow-up on um a question earlier on sustainability measurement. Um I I think that in some cases, your, some of your renderings had some green roofs, but I don't, I don't, we've ha- we haven't speci- specifically heard from you in terms of renewables. The scale of the buildings, uh you know, strike me as a great opportunity to achieve uh what zoning for carbon neutrality was trying to get to with the ultra-low energy definition. And so I'm wondering, you know, if you can share a little bit what's been the extent of discussing these opportunities with the department, but also in general, sort of like what standard are you uh seeking to achieve here?
Sure. Well, first of all, I really appreciate the question, Commissioner. So we're Studio Design, very dedicated to sustainable and green practices through all of our work. So I mean, just some features. First of all, it's kind of tricky because we are a platform, so normally I would try to achieve groundwater recharge. But instead, here we have the opportunity just to create as much permeable area through, you know, green spaces. And the project really has quite a lot of that, which is so unusual for a railroad build. So between the green area along the pedestrian walkway, to answer your question, all the roofs of all the residential buildings, except where they're accessible to the members of the residents, in other words, if there's a small portion with like a roof garden, which we've shown that, the remainder of the roofs, and you can kind of see it in this rendering, we made a point of including it, will be entirely green roofs, as well as we did extensive stoop gardens all along the edge, which I think are wonderful because they just draw on that whole kind of Brooklyn and New York housing tradition of creating like kind of gardens that participate in the life of the street. So between this and, you know, these areas here, which again are in all of the U L E R drawings, we're even showing where we're putting in street trees. We're doing, um you know, combined tree pits with understory plantings, so very, very extensive greenery. And then the final elements of like the energy systems for the building and so forth, that I can't really speak to yet. Most of our projects that we do achieve at least a lead silver standard, but we haven't established a standard for this project. Although frankly, you know, with most of our work, we achieve that standard anyways. So I can't say for the client because the commitment hasn't been made, but I would say that with our designs, we design everything into pretty much a lead silver standard and I think something like that would be easy to achieve here.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up with the number one. I really encourage you to go as far as you can, given the scale of this and, you know, the tuffle, sort of like tuffle-ness that you've already described here. This is an opportunity to achieve the maximum energy efficiency and so if you can, that'll be great. But also specifically in terms of renewables on site, are there any plans for solar or something like that?
We don't have any plans for solar at the moment, so we'll see. Again, I can just tell the commission that it's in the future because we really, to be frank, you know, need your approval in order to go forward and design the final systems, just to be honest about that. But I can tell you, we're doing the largest geothermal project in the history of New York, which actually we just opened and completed in Coney Island. Number two is Saint Patrick's Cathedral. So we are completely open to the possibility of using the most progressive energy standards. And frankly, City's done a good job because even the basic code is so stringent now that it's much higher even than the lead standards we used in the past. So we're definitely moving in the right direction and we'd like to take this project there too.
Thank you. In in terms of the permeability, if you can provide documentation to understand how that will work, I would I would appreciate. I understand the constraints that you are referring to with the platform, but I would love to understand how that system will work in more detail.
Sure. We could follow up and provide the percentage of green area that we have for the overall.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you uh to all of you on behalf of the applicant team. We appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation. I will look forward to um uh some of those follow-ups and we're going to proceed with the rest of the public hearing now.
Thank you.
So thank you. Um okay, um moving to um a couple of folks who we have here by phone. Uh we have Ari Wurtsberger and Jacob Landau, both by phone. So let's start with uh Ari Wurtsberger.
Ari appeared to register for dial-in. We don't have a registered number. Oh, Ari? Oh, okay, nevermind.
Ah-ha, well, mystery solved, okay. Mr. Wurtsberger is actually here with us at the hearing room at one twenty Broadway. Welcome, you have three minutes.
I appreciated all the hearing over here, sitting here. I really, really, the questions are, our community is really based on, on the affordable and everything. And um I think you covered all the bases. The only thing is that a little bit the office spaces, they didn't speak about the parking over there because people are going to come to work. And they say they're buying eighty eighty parkings for the living spaces, but the offices bring cars too. You should concern that too because there's going to be a big office building, even though we have a lot of offices over there in that area. And um I think the commissioners should really understand that we need affordable housing and affordable living. And all the concerns I heard, as she asked, is uh what the pricing will be because this project is probably going to call, going to cost them billions and millions of dollars. So I uh really rely on the commissioners over here. I see you guys are professionals and you know all the questions that our community really needs. We need housing and affordable housing. And also, we have a lot of um ra- large families, so she also asked about that. One one-bedroom apartment really doesn't cover too much, because it was average families, five kids. So it's not called studio, but it's a really like a close to studio warehouse. So uh that's why I'm here for and I appreciate all your public service and your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being with us. Okay, n- next I have Jacob Landau, who may be on phone. Do we have Mr. Landau?
Yeah, hello, do you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Yeah, hi, good morning, everyone. Uh when the community board held a meeting in June to discuss the proposed project, a huge crowd showed up in opposition. That meeting was held at night. Uh these people are working now and they're available to address their concerns. I wish that the members of the board can make some time one day to come to our beloved neighborhood to hear what the people really think about this project. Um these streets are really congested, are highly congested with cars, buses, commercial trucks and trailers. Sixteenth Street, as you know, is a wide street and is being used twenty-four seven as a passage fleet for the entire neighborhood. With the two office buildings under construction on this street already, plus the proposed Brook- Brooklyn Yards project, without a sufficient amount of parking and public space for adults and kids, we can't imagine how this will cripple the entire area and will cause harm for thousands of New Yorkers. Uh Sixteenth Street has an active M T A bus route and is being used constantly by emergency vehicles. The congestion reaches already its peak and nobody can afford this to get any worse. Uh more congestion will definitely disturb and endanger the life of many New Yorkers. Um bear in mind, public transportation isn't popular in this unique neighborhood, as you know, since most of them rely on cars to commute with their families. It's not only the struggle for the motorists to find a parking spot, but the fact that this will extremely increase the air pollution level by the autos constantly idling on the streets looking for a spot. And by the way, uh there isn't any shortage in office space in the area. Um it only benefits the developers. Nobody needs it. Uh as we all agree, the community needs housing. We need to find a sensible solution to provide housing with a minimum quality of life. Uh if this project gets approved as is, this away, this the situation will disturb the lives of the current residents of the area and for those ultimately occupy these units. I ask you to please oppose this project and let's work on a housing solution that really benefits all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landau. Uh before you go, we have a question for you from Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Uh Mr. Landau, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I, so I'm one of the commissioners and from where I sit, I I am a little bit surprised to hear this because the community board vot- voted overwhelmingly and I think it was twenty-three, uh voted overwhelmingly in favor. Um so I I am surprised to hear that there was, and I, and you're right, I wasn't at the community board. I am surprised to hear that there was a lot of opposition. What I'm wondering is, um, other than more parking spaces and more affordability, is there something else that community residents think that this po- how this project could improve? Or is it just, you know, so beyond repair that it needs to start over all again?
No, so so I would say that if someone owns a property and has this um empty vacant la- lots next to them, they would definitely oppose everything. But everyone understands that if there's open space and we can work out more housing in the community, it's something that makes sense, we all need housing. But to congest these streets that are highly congested, that's why I said in the beginning, if it looks, everything looks nice on the rendering. It's looking beautiful, I guess, there's a blue sky and everything looks good, people are working. But these streets are highly congested. If you, it's just twenty-four seven, uh literally. So we can, no one needs, we need housing, but it has to make sense with the surrounding areas. The, when the buses are coming in the morning or in the afternoon, taking home the kids, literally, it's a gridlock, like Midtown Manhattan. I'm not exaggerating, just something that we can, it's 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 bad as is now. So most of the people you talk to, they need housing, but they need housing that will have some sort of quality of life. It shouldn't like overcrowd the neighborhood. So it's the open, there's the open space they need. They say that it's for larger families, it isn't enough. And they definitely need more parking spaces and nobody, again, nobody needs the office space in the neighborhood. So if we can um have some parking over there, work something out. Um again, I wish if one of the board members can come down to the neighborhood. Uh not in the summer when it's empty, just uh after the season, to see by themselves what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Landau. Uh next up is uh Solomon Alibovitz, also by phone.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, yes, hi. This is uh Solomon Alibovitz speaking. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we're here.
Yes, we're here, we hear you.
Okay, great. Um so I am a local real estate broker in the borough of the community and I'm definitely here to vouch for this project based on the fact that we need a serious amount of housing. There's a huge shortage and all-size apartments and excuse me, and these are bringing, this project is bringing very nice all-size apartments that are definitely needed. Um I understand there are constraints from neighbors around there that about the congestion, but this is something that happens on every block in Brooklyn when you build. But other than that, the community really, really, really needs it and looking forward for this project.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Okay, uh next we have David Chan, Carl Koller and Aaron Gluck, all of whom I believe are here with us in the room. Perhaps. Uh let's start with David Chan. Mr. Chan, are you here? Okay, we don't have Mr. Chan on Zoom, correct? Oh, we do.
David, you should be able to unmute in Zoom. David, you should be able to unmute in Zoom.
David Chan, Mr. Chan.
We promoted uh David to panelist. Uh David, I think I just heard you.
Hello?
Yes.
There you go.
We can.
Yes.
Welcome.
Um, good morning. Uh my name's David Chan. I live and work in Boilow Park for the last twenty-five years and very familiar with the area. I believe the project would greatly benefit for several reasons. First, it will make the area much safer. Many people I work with are hesitant to take the train in the area after dark due to the safety concern. The current space is abandoned and frequently littered with trash and make it unsafe and unwelcoming. The project would significantly improve the area appeal with the additional office space and retail store. Additionally, this is a housing shortage in Brooklyn. Many people, especially young folk who have lived and grew up in the Brooklyn entire life, are now finding it a challenge to foot fund housing, which is forcing them to move far away. With the project, eighty-one new affordable housing unit will be added, helping to address the shortage. Overall, the project will enhance the community by adding more housing, create more workspace and improve the area appearance and does not change the character of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chan. Uh okay, next up is Carl Koller. Welcome, Mr. Koller, to be followed by Aaron Gluck.
Yeah, my, I guess you have my name is Carl Koller, but my Hebrew name is Nachman Koller and that's what the whole community knows of me. I've been around since nineteen seventy-five, I came back from Lake with the Miss Madge Gavola and I went, went to law school. By the way, I went to Columbia, so anyway, so anyway, I I, when I ran in uh twenty fourteen, this was, the plans that are out there were part of my platform. It was called a dream. Thank God the dream is coming true and I thank, I thank uh Ken, Rachel and Jay for, I can't believe the hard work, ten years' work of such difficult work that they did. And I also thank the M T A and all the agencies, how they they went along with it. And I'm so glad to hear that Jay says he has another project in Flatbush. We actually looked, when we were looking around, we said that there's a project in Flat- in Flatbush. So this is the, this is the answer to the housing shortage in the city of New York. You could, just by putting out all these railroads and building on top of it, the city can make overruled congestion pricing, you don't need it anymore. You can make billions and billions of dollars with this. Anyway, commuting needs it desperately. Uh my, any young people gets married, uh doing the best, makes the one, one year, two years from their baby and then finished. They don't know what to do. They're living in hotels, there's nothing, uh inch. It, because we had so many marriages every year, there's no place to put anybody, even for the older people. I mean, I I think this works for older people also. A lot of people have houses and they can sell, get, sell their houses and move into, you know, a nice apartment, an accessible apartment. So this is the solution for us and it's the solution for the city of New York. I really urge, it took ten years. I didn't think it was going to take ten years. I hope that the next phase is done in two years so we can move forward and the city can move forward. And I think this is the greatest idea that ever came. It was a, it was a dream when I, when I proposed it, but the dream is coming true.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Koller, appreciate that. Uh wait, before you go, Commissioner Goodrich has a question for you.
Yeah.
Uh thank you so much for your enthusiasm and and your testimony.
Yeah.
Um I'm interested in hearing your perspective on, you know, some of the concerns that have been brought up. Uh I'm from Brooklyn, I'm really familiar with all parts of Brooklyn and so one concern- so one concern that's been brought up is who the apartments will be for. So if it's not going to be a lot of three bedrooms with the community, there are a lot of families with children, and so how will, you know, one, so one concern, number one, is that there won't be enough apartments available for families. Number two, the other concern is the affordability. That's not clear as of now. We know the, it's, you know, it's still being worked out, but as of now, you know, we're being asked to approve it, but it's still not clear. And then the third is the congestion. I'm a little bit surprised to hear that there was, you know, well, I'm surprised and not really surprised at the same time to hear that there was opposition to the community. So I'm, I would love for you to respond, and, and I would love to hear your take on that, as someone who is also from the community.
Okay, I live right, right near. I live on 57th Street, only three blocks away. I don't understand exactly why this project is different than any other project that got approved. There's nothing more. I believe the opposition comes from probably the next-door neighbors, which they oppose anything that's both next to you. So I really, I don't think this is a position of community. I think the community is enthusiastic about this. As for the apartments, I know the building, and they're trying to get the most people in there as possible. I know Jay has been building forever, and, and I do think that the mix is going to work for the community to get more housing, whatever housing can get, if, if, is it. I mean, I think they probably did the best plan. I mean, do you realize that this project was done without government funds? It makes no sense at all. Why didn't, why doesn't the government come in and pay for the platform and share things? I mean, this, they give us everything else. This, this project is being done in the private funds, which is my right. I mean, this is the most, most important project. So, so I don't stand. If, if, I guess if money from the city, maybe we could build another, another. And yet, we actually have another. We have, there was an offer from '14 to '16, and we won the bid, and they, and they backed off. Give it to us, give it with government funding, or build all affordable. I don't, you know, this is what, the city wants housing, that's what the next thing they want. So this is the place. Along the railroad tracks, you could have thousands of apartments, the empty can make fortune in money, and there's apartments, there's money, and let the city come in and, and, you know, help, help build the foundations.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodrich. Thank you again, Mr. Koller. Next up is Aaron Gluck. And after Mr. Gluck, I'm just going to call back the applicant team for a moment for a question or two from Commissioner Gold, as he had to step out when we were finishing before. Mr. Gluck, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you everybody for being here. My name is Aaron Gluck. I live in Borough Park for the past 30 years. I have a daughter. Her name is Toby. She's getting married in December. Mazel tov, thank you. And we prepare for the wedding. I mean, there's a lot of expenses, there's a lot of things going on, but one thing that comes up every day is, what about an apartment? And I don't have the answer for it, because I've been looking, and I've, I'm still looking. And whatever's available is painfully expensive, and there's very, very few. There's not much available. A lot of couples that I know that recently got married are living in hotel rooms, illegal basements, they're cramped in, in not livable conditions. So I'm not here to talk specifically about this project because I know nothing about it. I just heard about this recently, and I said if 270 apartments being built in my neighborhood, 70 of them will be rent-capped apartments. I'm taking off from work, coming here today, and voicing my opinion. And I'm urging you to approve this project, and any other project might come up in similar sorts. It's very, very well appreciated. Not only not opposed, it's, there's no question that all these oppositions are coming from the people who already have their projects approved, they're already living in their apartments, and that's the next one that they don't like, that it gets approved like next to them. But please, if you approve this project, you're all invited to the wedding.
Thank you very much. That's something we certainly could not accept, but, but we appreciate the sentiment nonetheless. Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. And I will note, of course, what you are reflecting in your comments is an issue which we are seeing in this neighborhood and seeing throughout the city, which is a dire shortage of housing, which is something that we are, you know, working to find ways to correct. So thank you very much for taking the time off to be with us today. It's very meaningful. Okay, thank you. Let me ask the applicant team to come back for a moment. Commissioner Gold has some questions.
Thank you. And forgive me for being a little bit behind. First, I just wanted to say, I don't want you leaving without saying, in looking at this and reading through it, it seems to be a very creative use of the space that you have, which does seem to resonate with the community. You know, we think a lot of thought and a lot of planning has certainly gone into the height, you know, having the low rise. So it's actually, I commend you on that. The one thing I just really wanted to confirm, one or two things. One is, when we look at the square footage of 271,000 of resi and 270 apartments, even with the mix that you referenced, it sounds like those one-bedrooms would be a nice size. But I just wanted to confirm that as you think about that. I mean, you know, the average apartment seems to be about 1,000 square feet, give or take. So that leaves you a lot of room, even as you mix it up, presumably, but they're all decent-sized apartments. Do you have, you know, is there anything one could say? I know we're still laying it out, but as far as the size of, you know, the ones in the different apartments?
Yeah, the, the sizes all vary. As you saw, the site is very complex because of all the angles and so forth. So they're generally not the most efficient buildings, by their very nature, but because we wanted to use these sort of leftover sites that are these unusual shapes. So I couldn't say, but I know that typically, one-bedrooms tend to be in the range of around 650, two-bedrooms tend to be in the range of 850 to 900. They vary, and they're probably, they could be a little bigger just because of the natural inefficiencies of the site, and then we have the possibility of some of the bigger units, too. So the whole goal was really, and it's kind of a hallmark of our work, actually, is kind of using these leftover spaces and trying to optimize the value of them, and really make them into, you know, livable assets for the communities. So I couldn't tell you the details of every size, but I could tell you those are some of the general parameters, please.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the other thing I just wanted to confirm, I think you answered, I think Rachel answered to Commissioner Dweck's question, you said 2030. Is that 2030 for the build being done, or is that 2030 for us to start building?
Oh, my gosh. Well, it's 2030 for it to be done. That's the goal.
So we open, we?
Sincerely hope, hope it's not 2030 to start building.
Perfect. I wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Gold. Okay, let me just do a last call, see if there are members of the public who wish to be heard on this item. Calendar's 16 through 25, Brooklyn Yards. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the hearing on this item. Madam Secretary, what's next on our agenda?
I just have a minor correction to make. Calendar number 25 was C230196ZSK. I think I said 191ZSK in error. Apologies. Also, there is no other business before the Commission today, but I do have some public information to share. For those who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the NYC Engage portal, through GCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York 10271.
Terrific. Thank you. So with appreciation to members of the public who are here, I'm going to go to Commissioner Crowe for...
I'd just like to record my votes for the calendar items. I vote I for all the ones the Commissioner...
The vote items today. Yes, that will be noted.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I should have called on you when you came in.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Commissioner Goodrich, you wish to cast your votes as well?
Yes. He's also voting yes on all of the calendar items. Thank you.
Great. Is there anybody else we missed? I don't think so. Yeah.
Fully noted on votes, yeah.
Great. We will have those duly recorded. Thank you. With appreciation to everybody who was with us today, took time out of their schedule, members of the public, we appreciate it very much. Commissioners, thank you. Hope you enjoy the remainder of your, your summer, and we will pick this up after Labor Day. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
The time is 11:53 a.m.